Because that comes through this way, I think theirs. Yeah. 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 Good.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Commissioner, how are you? Good, how are you?
Commissioner, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I know.
No, that's okay.
Hey.
Any idea?
Don't you want to speak?
No, I drink at the time. No, it gets me in this moment.
But all we got is such.
Yeah.
There they are.
So that's going to be just.
Yeah.
But they were evil.
Kind of have.
For some reason.
Sure.
There's seven, right?
Okay.
Like a bar stool.
No.
Not much.
Some of it.
They're going there.
Yeah, there's three of us. These kids are.
Okay.
What?
I would be like this.
Hey.
That won't work.
You look nice and relaxed.
I don't think that's the. I don't think that's him if you want.
Maybe.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
What?
I didn't know.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
All the robots.
Oh, good.
Couple weeks, couple months, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, we spent, I mean, we covered a lot of territories, so we were in the bus a lot. It was good.
It's good.
We changed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Right?
I got some good stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't have any.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, they.
I'm surprised.
I'll check with them.
I want some something else.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, we'd like to know.
All right.
We've ordered doors, so it should be here soon.
Only taking seven years.
I prefer being as kind as you know.
Maybe, maybe it's not even.
There's five of us.
Probably two or three.
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. It's 9:07 a.m. on April 12th, 2022. We will call this meeting to order, and this morning, our invocation will be given by Elder Dave Mitchell from the Las Cruces Church of Christ. Elder Mitchell, please go ahead and come on up.
Thank you for this opportunity to open the proceedings. Let's go to our Father in prayer. Precious Father, Almighty God, Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you, Father, for everything that you are to us. But we thank you, most of all, for your holy son, Jesus, who has shown us how to live this life, who has shown us you, Father, and he freely gave his life to die on our cross for our sins. But we thank you, most of all, that you raised him from the dead, so that not only we can know the forgiveness of our sins, but we can know that, that hope of eternal life when this one is over. Precious Father, we ask that you would watch over the Board of County Commissioners here as they make decisions that affect many of the residents. many of the residents, if not all, of our county. Precious Father, grant them the wisdom and guide them through these proceedings. We ask that in all their efforts that you will be glorified, no matter what. Father, forgive us of the sins we've committed. Help us always to show our love for you through the things that we do for one another. These things we ask in the precious, most holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Elder Mitchell. If y'all would join and rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Allenz.
Commissioner Allenz will be joining us shortly.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Chaparro.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Murillo.
Present.
Chair Sanchez.
Present.
The Commission convenes as the Board of County Commissioners and the County Board of Finance in open session. Mr. Macias, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. There are no changes to the agenda.
Very good. Then we'll move on to pet showcase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those in the audience and those that may be viewing this meeting, the County Commission takes advantage of every meeting to encourage the adoption of animals from the Animal Services Center. And we have a cat and dog of the week. We'll start with the cat of the week, Bullion, who's six years old and a domestic long hair. I'm a little older and may look a little scruffy, but past my exterior is a sweet, gentle soul. I love soft pets, and if I get too overstimulated, I will let you know very politely. I do best with older kids and people that know how to treat cats very gently. I'm such a wonderful, unique boy. I even have thumbs. The dog of the week is Edward. Almost two years old, a large breed, male. At 65 pounds, I'm a bit on the bigger end. But I'm just a sweet teddy bear. I love getting cuddles, and I've learned how to be good on a leash. I can sometimes be a little picky with my dog friends. So you, if you have any of your own, I wouldn't mind meeting them before you take me home. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, these are our pets of the week. Again, for those here in the audience and viewing, there's opportunities to, expanded opportunities to adopt either Bullion or Edward or any other animal from the Animal Services Center that might capture your heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Okay, we're on to our public input portion of our meeting. If there are any members of the public that would like to provide public input, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're here to speak about a specific agenda item, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is up for discussion. Are there any members of the public here to provide public input? Okay, seen none? All right, we'll move on to our staff input. Mr. Lopez, I don't know if you're, or who might be here for our community partner, guess not. Mr. Macias, is there any staff input this morning?
No, sir.
Okay. I made the assumption when I saw Mr. Lopez that it was going to be one of our community partners presented today. Very good. Okay, then we're on to county elected officials' input. I don't know, Mr. Treasurer, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Rodriguez, County Treasurer. Pleasure to be with you today. I'm just here to tell you that property taxes are due. We send out, we sent out second half tax notices two weeks ago, and the due date was on April 10th. But people have until May 10th before they actually do become delinquent. This year, we updated our return address to an out-of-state address in Los Angeles, California. That is where our bank's lockbox service provider is located. It's a centralized location where they accept these types of payments for various other governmental entities like county treasurer's offices or other private entities as well. But it's a, it's a way of delivering someone's check directly to the recipient's bank account, in this case, the county, in this case, for property tax purposes. We've been working with the county's PIO team to get the message out to the public that this Los Angeles address is valid. More importantly, to address any misinformation that's out there about the county potentially outsourcing property tax collections. That is just simply not the case. As a matter of fact, it is the statutory constitutional responsibility for a county treasurer to collect on these tax revenues here locally and not outsource that duty out to somebody else out of state. So, no, we're not outsourcing payments to somebody else out of state. Los Angeles, our bank is not in Los Angeles, California. Their lockbox processing center is located there. And so, we've been working to make sure that we address those concerns, and I'm here to, to provide you with that information as well and provide the public the peace of mind that we are still receiving your payments and we still are processing those payments here locally. We still have a PO box address here, so if people do mail their payments to our local office, we will still receive them. We will still process them, just not as fast. We are a little short-staffed in this tax cycle. We're down two tellers. Normally, we have five. Right now, we have three. So you can imagine, there's lunchtime, somebody calls in, we're down two, two or one potentially. So our lines will get longer from time to time. So I encourage people to use our online payment services, pay over the phone, or use our mailing payment service and mail your payment. It is secure. It is processed much faster, and you'll see it clear in your bank account much sooner than if we were to get it here in the mail and process it ourselves. So, yeah, just making sure that the public is aware that the Los Angeles address is correct, but everything else is still done here locally, and your tax dollars are still here locally in Doñana County. I was talking a little bit about staffing. We fortunately will become fully staffed in the next couple of weeks. As a matter of fact, I will be interviewing for positions, two positions, those vacant positions tomorrow, so we should be able to fill that in. But I do want to tell you that our back office now has been completely staffed, and I want to introduce you to somebody that it takes a big row. Marisol, you want to come up here? So, the accountant-three position in the treasurer's office is basically the one that takes care of all the books, the one that makes sure that all our bank accounts are accounted for, all cash is accounted for. And this is a really major duty of what a county treasurer does. So I want to introduce you to a potentially familiar face to some of you. Marisol Richardson, our new accountant-three. She was the budget officer for many years here in the county. She's also took on a role as the accounts payable manager. So she has extensive, an extensive background here in the county that is very helpful to my office and ultimately to the public to ensure that we have these qualified people here in the office. As a matter of fact, she's been with us for now almost two months now. And as you could see on the consent agenda, how many treasures reports we have. So you could see how busy she's been catching, catching, catching us up to where we should be at with our reporting. And so for that, I'm thankful and lucky, you know, to have her on board. So, Marisol is our new accountant-three. Commissioners, I'm happy to address any questions. Other than that, that is all I have for today.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Reynolds.
First thing I want to say, welcome home, Marisol. Second thing, I really liked the video that you put out that, on, I actually forwarded it to my Facebook as well to try to help push out that message that the Los Angeles address is actually correct. So I think that was good. I didn't, I didn't see on our website. Will we, should we maybe put it on here as well?
Yeah, I will be working on that as well. But, you know, the kudos really, Commissioner Reynolds, goes to our PIO team. You know, they're, they're the ones that helped me with the messaging. They're the ones that helped me put it together. You know, they're the experts in filming and everything. So, so much kudos to them and very grateful that they were able to step up to the plate right away to help me with that messaging. Because, yeah, that misinformation would have easily gotten out of control.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. And the other comments from the commissioners? You know, I almost want to pull that from the consent agenda, your report's just, I mean, we could, you know, just for old times' sake, we can have you present and welcome you back properly to the county.
I'm sure, I'm sure she'd be excited, would you?
But it's, it's great to see you back, my son. And as I think as Commissioner Reynolds said, welcome home, and we're great to have, I know Commissioner, sorry, Treasurer Rodriguez, is an excellent hire, so congratulations to your team, and I know you're working hard. And just to reiterate the same sentiments as Commissioner Reynolds, that, that video was an excellent, did an excellent job with the video, you and the PIO office. Whatever we can do to continue to broadcast that out, we'll continue to do so, but appreciate you addressing it very quickly because I know we saw that it was brought up on social media pages, and you jumped on very quickly, you and your deputy. We're trying to address those concerns right away, so I appreciate you, what you're doing for the community. So thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, is there any other county elected officials' input? All right, then we'll move on to commission input. Is there any input from the other commissioners? All right, let me, I have a couple of comments. One, I did want to say thank you to Vice Chair Murillo for stepping in in the last meeting and while I was away, so I appreciate your help with that. So thank you. I did have, wanted to get some information out. It's been on the social media. But I'll be having some meetings with constituents over the next, within this month as well as next month. We had our first meeting in Garfield last week, last Thursday, at Garfield Elementary. We had a good conversation, and it's the first one that I've had with my constituents since before the beginning of the pandemic. So it was a good conversation, raising issues that they were seeing. They gave me a nice list of things to focus on. But we'll be having another one here next week, April 20th, at the Radiospeed Community Center. We'll be doing it at 11:30 to 12:30. For the address, that one, for those that, my new address, it's 112,060 Lindbeck Road. Then next month, we'll be having two more sessions, one, May 4th, which will be in Doñana at our community center on Ledesma. That one will be, again, May 4th from 5:30 to 6:30. And then, May 18th, which will be 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at night or in the evening in Rincon at our community center there as well on Baker Drive. So, we'll be trying to get back, I'll be trying to get back out in the community. And so if, if there's any feedback, if I'm going to be trying to move these around into the various, our various communities in District 5. But appreciate anyone that can attend and provide feedback. So just wanted to get that out there. Again, the information's also on our social media, on Facebook, Instagram as well. All right. So with that, we'll move on to our agenda item number one, which is our meeting, regular meeting minutes for March 22nd, 2022. If I can get a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. That was a motion by Vice Chair Murillo and seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Is there any discussion, changes to the meeting minutes? All right. And Randy, will you call the roll on the meeting minutes for March 22nd?
Commissioner Allenz.
Sorry, Commissioner Allenz, we're voting on the meeting minutes from...
Commissioner Reynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Chaparro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo.
Yes.
Chair Sanchez.
Yes. All right, then we're on to our presentations and proclamations, which is an agenda item number two, which is to proclaim April 24th through the 30th, 2022, as Crime Victims Week, Rights Week, in Doñana County, and a special recognition honoring the District Attorney Victim Advocates. I'd like to welcome up District Attorney Gerald Byers to come on up to introduce. And while we're waiting for that, if I can get a motion in a second to begin this discussion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Chaparro, seconded by Vice Chair Murillo.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Manager Macias, and any other distinguished guests who might be present. My name's Gerald Byers, District Attorney, Third Judicial District here in Doñana County. And I wanted to thank you for permitting us to take this opportunity to present to you the victim advocates of the District Attorney's Office and honor their service to the people of Doñana County as part of the commemoration of Victims Rights Week, the National Victims Rights Week, for which this Commission is acknowledging. Just a brief introduction. Crime is something that is at the top of every tabloid, at the top of every newspaper and social media feed, anywhere we look right now. But one of the invisible aspects of it is its impact on people. Impact on our neighbors, impact on our family members, impact on people who, other than that event, we would not know. Interestingly, our state, quite honorably, I believe, passed a constitutional amendment recognizing the rights of crime victims because the heart of this state has been put forward to recognize and commemorate the fact that people matter. The victims of crime matter. And that as a member of this community, as a resident and a citizen of the state of New Mexico, they have rights in our criminal justice system which demand protection and veneration. And so I wanted to share with you the efforts of the victim advocates of the District Attorney's Office in making those rights come to reality. One of the things that we may not realize, if we have never been a victim of crime, is that if the, if the crime occurred at an intersection, for example, it's a vehicular homicide or something else like that, every time that person passes the intersection, it's a reminder. If the crime occurred in a home, for us, it might be a crime scene. For the crime victim, that's their home. Then they're asked to navigate the intricacies of the criminal justice system, which is a real puzzle palace for many a people who are professionals who operate within the system. And that's where our victim advocates come in. There is no victim advocate 101 training program. It's learned on the job, and those people who have the capacity to do it, stick with it. Those people who do not, quickly find out that it's not for them. I liken it very much to the work that is performed by Mother Teresa's Little Sisters. You have to have, it's a calling, and you have to have that compassion to want to reach out and help someone who is hurting in invisible ways, not just visible ways as well. And so with that, I wanted to take the opportunity to present our victim advocates to you and also present them with awards on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, before we do that, perhaps if you would allow the reading of the proclamation, since there is a motion before the Commission, action to be taken by the Commission after any debate that there may be, or any questions of Mr. Byers. And then perhaps we can then proceed with the, with the ceremony.
Absolutely. Mr. Macias, if you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week highlights the importance of helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all. And whereas the Crime Victim Rights Act passed here in New Mexico and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights, which help victims access justice, assistance, and support they need to rebuild their lives. And whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can increase access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by inequity by implementing culturally responsive opportunities. And whereas we express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crimes so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. And whereas Doñana County, County, excuse me, Doña Ana County Commissioners joins the District Attorney's Office in their commitment to create a victim service and criminal justice res-... and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime throughout the year. Now therefore, the Doñana County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 24th through 30th of 2022 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Mr. Chairman, a proclamation for the consideration of the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Is there any input from the Commission? Commissioner Chaparro?
Thank you and good morning to all of you. You all hold a special place in my heart. I've worked with you for many, many years. And I think without you being in the courtroom and without you helping these victims have a voice, they wouldn't have one. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and thank you on behalf of our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaparro. Is there any other input? All right. So Brandy, will you call the roll on this proclamation?
Commissioner Owens.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. Proclamation's approved. Mr. Byers, if you want to go ahead with your.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to recognize Victim Advocate Supervisor Suzanne Sandoval. Next is Victim Advocate Lucy Jimenez. Victim Advocate Lima Avalos. Victim Advocate Priscilla Lopez. Victim Advocate Chantel Delgado. Victim Advocate Debbie Aviar. And last but not least, Victim Advocate Sandy Perez. And Mr. Chair and Commission Members and County Manager, I present to you the District Attorney's Office Victim Advocates.
All right, so we're on to Agenda Item Number 3, which is to proclaim April 10th through the 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Doñana County. If I get a motion in a second. I'd had a motion by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Owens. Thank you, gentlemen. So our Telecommunications Worker Act is our first line of communication between people who call 911 and the officers, the paramedics and firefighters who respond. We issue this proclamation today in recognition of those unseen heroes who must remain prepared for any type of situation and do so in a manner that keeps the caller calm. We have a dedicated team here at the Macia Valley Regional Dispatch Center, probably known as MERVDA. As we recognize their efforts, it is important to be mindful of how we can help to do their jobs more efficiently. We can do our part to make sure that when we need them the most, that we do, that each one of us that calls for their help to do our part. So if you ever find yourself on the phone with a dispatcher to help them get you the help sooner, you can do the following things. Number one is know your address and make sure your children know it too. It's important that if they know that, not only do they know the number, but that they know the location of where you're at and where you live. Look around for any landmarks, street signs and other easily identified points. I know in the county, it's always, sometimes our address doesn't always tie to where our homes actually are. So it's absolutely important that you can provide as much information to dispatchers as possible. You can also reach out to MERVDA if you want to provide additional information on how to reach your address. So when they pull it up, they have that information already to go so that they can provide paramedics or any first responders that information. So I'm sure the group we're honoring today, like I said, they're unforeseen heroes. We don't see them. You're only, usually the only time we get to see them is when, or hear really, hear from them is when they're, when you need them on the other side of the phone. Today, we were supposed to have Hugo Costa Jr., who's the Executive Director of MERVDA, to recognize or be on hand for this proclamation. Unfortunately, he had an emergency that had to take him away. So I don't believe we have anybody from MERVDA that is here with us this morning. But we did want to say thank you for all your efforts and all that you do here in our community and in our county. I don't know if there's any, actually before, open it up for input. Mr. Macias, if you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, adopted by Congress in 1994, is observed every second week in April to recognize and celebrate the work of people who answer emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment to render lifesaving aid to the citizens of the United States. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the vital communication link for police officers, firefighters and emergency medical personnel, monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. Without telecommunications and the system to alert our public safety personnel, millions of lives would be lost due to delayed responses. And whereas telecommunications have a critical impact as they are called upon for quick dispatching of public safety help or calm instructions about how to apply proper bandaging to stop bleeding, provide CPR or even deliver a baby. And whereas Macia Valley Regional Dispatch Authority, MERVDA, the first consolidated dispatch center in the state of New Mexico between Doñana County and the city of Las Cruces, covers 3,807 square miles and serves approximately 214,445 residents. And whereas in 2021, MERVDA's dispatch center received 366,054 calls, resulting in 233,915 law enforcement, 35,317 fire services and 27,960 emergency medical incidents dispatched. Whereas in honor of the many nameless and faceless personnel who serve the public daily in emergency situations without opportunities to receive thanks from the beneficiaries of their work, we thank you all for keeping our community safe. Now therefore, the Doñana County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th of 2022 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Mr. Chairman, a proclamation for you and the board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. I did want to recognize also Commissioner Reynolds, who is the Chair of the MERVDA Board. And I know while we don't have any way specific for MERVDA, perhaps we can have Commissioner Reynolds accept the proclamation on their behalf. But I'll open it up to the Commission for any input on this proclamation. Commissioner Reynolds?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Manager Macias. Thank you for reading the proclamation. I've had the actual honor to be a part of that board for now almost a year and a half and was elected to Chair this year. I have to say that the work that they do, if you haven't experienced it or try to talk to them, you know, they're the heartbeat of what keeps us safe in the county. And not only that, they cover two other counties as well, two or three other counties when calls come in. We also do backup for state police, you know, and coordinate with them to get things done. So their job is very intense, I guess is the best word. If you, if you, you take a call, you don't know if it's an emergency, you don't know what kind of emergency is, and you have to stay on the phone until actual services arrive. And this, there's not many people that actually can do this and do it well and do it for a long time. The biggest challenge with the MERVDA team is burnout, especially the people that take the calls, do the 911 board. They average time they stay there is only about eight to 10 years. So it's very difficult to find someone with the right personality to do this kind of job. And so we each need to really think about every time we pick up the phone and make a 911 call or an emergency call, that, you know, we're wanting services, but the people who make sure those services happen is the 911 or MERVDA center. So that's, I really appreciate what they do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Is there any other input?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Owens?
MERVDA does magical things.
Yes, sir.
Does it?
Well, I think it's, I was gonna say magical, but it's hard work. All right, any additional input? Okay. Brandy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. Okay, Agenda Item Number 4, which is a proclamation in support of Ukraine. We get a motion in a second on this Agenda Item. Moved by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Chaparro. All right. Commissioner Owens? Floor is yours, sir.
This proclamation was brought to us by a person of Ukrainian descent, something which interested me very much. In the late 19th century, my grandparents on my father's side immigrated from Ukrainia to Brooklyn, New York. At the time, my father told me that they came from that part of Russia known as, then known as White Russia, which was a more liberal section of the Russian Empire and slow to accept communism as a form of government. I never thought very much about it, except I knew I was a third generation Russian. And I've never been captivated by Russia as a government entity from the Tsars and the Cossacks, Stalin, Khrushchev and now President Putin. But in light of current events, I rethought my heritage and I realized I'm a third generation Ukrainian and proud of it. And so, Mr. Macias, would you read the proclamation, please?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, thank you, Commissioner Owens. Whereas on February 24th of 2022, Vladimir Putin and Russia launched an invasion of Ukraine, shattering decades of peace in Europe. And whereas Ukraine is a state governed as a single entity in which the central government is the supreme authority, led by a president elected by popular vote. Ukraine is home to nearly 44 million citizens and is the second largest country on the European continent. And whereas we stand with the people of Ukraine against the breach of international and humanitarian law. And whereas as a local government, we stand for justice, equality and peace. Doñana County is a proud, multicultural, multiracial and diverse community that is home to people originally from Ukraine and who have relatives and loved ones remaining in Ukraine, fearing for their lives. And whereas our thoughts are with the Ukrainian citizens who are under attack, those who shelter in place and those who have fled in search of safety. Therefore, we support Ukraine as a sovereign, self-governing state and encourage everyone in Doñana County to find ways to support our Ukrainian friends and neighbors here and those actually in Ukraine. Mr. Chairman, a proclamation for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Is there any other input from the board? Okay. Brandy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. That proclamation passes by zero.
And Mr. Chairman, although it's not in the proclamation, I would not formally ask permission, but to just make sure that there isn't any objection. We were offered the opportunity to, as you know, we have three flag poles in the front. One flies the flag of the United States, one flags, flies the flag of the state of New Mexico and one normally is flying the flag of the county. That we be allowed to substitute on a given day and designate it flying the Ukrainian flag in the place of the county flag. And of course, with all of the proper decorum and respect related to the flag of the United States. And so we have been given that offer. I haven't still connected with the individual who made that offer. But again, it's just a gesture of solidarity related to what is occurring at this.
a gesture of solidarity related to what is occurring at this point and in support of this proclamation.
I don't have any objection to it. All right. I believe that's, we can move forward with that, Mr. Masias.
All right, thank you.
Okay. On to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a presentation by Animal Control to provide departmental statistical updates and a yearly comparison. Ms. Mary Lou Ward, good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners.
And, forgive me, Ms. Ward. Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Ward begins with a presentation, again, this presentation is response to the Commission that may not be as familiar and raise some issues related to the level of activity or engagements related to animal control in the community. I know that, Mr. Chairman, you, Senator Allen's, Commissioner Murillo sit on the Masiá Valley Animal Services Center Board, the joint board between the county and the city of Las Cruces. And again, may be familiar because some of these stats are shared there at that meeting every month, but I believe that some of the other Commissioners would find value in the presentation of this information.
Thank you, Mr. Masias, for that. Okay. Ms. Ward?
Okay. And so, let me see if I can. Okay, if I'll just go ahead and go forward. So on this slide, you'll go ahead and see, this is just, um, uh, statisticals on our calls for service. So our calls for service in two thousand and twenty-one, if you look at that, are eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six calls that the animal control officer responded for two thousand twenty-one. And in regards to that, we also issued seventy-four citations, and I know there was a question in one of the B O C C meetings in regards to animal control issuing citations for one thing or another. And those citations were usually, we start with, uh, going to someone's house and working with somebody and giving educational outreach and issuing like a verbal warning first, and then we'll issue a written warning, and that's where you'll see four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seven written warnings that they've received and got compliance on. And then in regards to that, those, out of some of those, we've escalated into the seventy-four citations where some of those people, we didn't get compliance, went into the citations. So in two thousand twenty-two, this, these were only up until February because we hadn't gotten to compile our March statistics as of yet, when we were compiling this information. We had fifteen citations, and fifty-one of those were written warnings, and we received those compliance.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Allen's?
Mary Lou, in the case of the four hundred and seven written warnings and the fifty-one written warnings, do you get compliance in all cases? Four hundred and seven?
Not all, Commissioners. If you look, seventy-four of those ended up in citations.
Okay, so the warning was issued, and seventy-four of them?
Ended up in citations.
Thereafter.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look, when we further go into these details on our court outcomes, you'll see that even though we've written citations, once we've gone to court, we've still gotten compliance later on, on some of these citations. So looking even on some of our animal bites and dangerous dogs calls, in two thousand twenty-one, we responded to four hundred and sixty-two vicious and or dangerous animal calls and two hundred and twenty-two human bites to animals, which resulted in a hundred and seventy-one actual bites. So those calls might come in from MERVDA as an animal bite to a person, but when we got there, the bot, the animal, the dog, or whatever it was, actually never bought, bit that person. So those actual bites might be reduced. And fifty-four of those were actually current on the rabies vaccination. I just thought that was an important factor to include. In two thousand twenty-two, so far, we responded to eighty-four of those, and seventy-nine were bites to a person, and seven of those were current on the rabies vaccination.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Just quickly, these statistics you're showing here, I know it says county, but this also includes the city, doesn't it?
No, sir. Just county, just the rural areas, the unincorporated areas.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Ward, I just had a quick question. So it looks like, it seems like a majority of those that are actual bites are animals which are not current on their rabies vaccinations. Is that correct?
On which one, sir?
The rabie, so the actual, when it looks like the number of bites that actually occur, a majority of those bites are from animals that are not current?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that, is that because of, are they just, I mean, have we looked at it to understand? Is it just a matter of they were late? Like, they've had it before and they just hadn't gotten the most current one? Or is this just where they're not, where an owner is not even vaccinating their animal at all?
It's various reasons, yeah. And we're seeing a lot of them where they're just not vaccinating them.
Okay, thank you.
And so these are our court outcomes, and I've gone to, and actually, let me go back, I'm sorry. I thought we had the one from November on there, but I guess it's not in there. Okay. So our court outcomes from January of two thousand twenty-two, you'll look at six cases went to court, and out of those six cases that we charged, we had six charges. So we had six cases with six charges. So we might have gone and charged somebody and had six charges of those. Six of those charges were for violation, restraint violations. Two of those charges were dismissed because the owner came into compliance. So maybe we've gone to court and they proved in the courts that those animals were in compliance. So those were dismissed. One was dismissed because the dog was determined not to be their dog. Maybe the dog got, was running at large and was picked up and impounded at the Animal Services Center, and the people went and claimed the dog and signed ownership of it. So we held those people accountable as the owner, and then later on, it was determined, for whatever reason, it wasn't their dog. Two charges went to a bench warrant, and one charge was reset for another day. And then I just included, the longest amount of time between our court cases in this month was six months. So the amount of time on the cases that we had during this month was six months. So sometimes we'll have, we'll issue a citation, and it might take a year or two years before we actually see that case, before it goes to court. This particular month in January, it was six months.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, or, sorry, Commissioner Allen's, you had a comment?
What is a restraint violation?
That's where the animal's running loose. It's running at large. It's unrestrained. So it's running off their property.
Okay, I thought it meant that they were leashed, tied up in the backyard, or some similar analogy.
It could be as well. It could be a violation of the way they're keeping them restrained, but majority of these times, it's going to be where the animal's running at large.
Okay.
And then we keep track of the hours that we spend on our cases in regards to our appearances in court, how long it takes the officers to get ready for that case, and we have our, I have our caseworker in here with me as well. He helps the officers prepare for the cases as well. So in January, we compiled about thirteen hours in regards to our court cases and our appearances.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Mary Lou, I really appreciate all this information. Chair asked about the rabies shots and people not being current with their shots. Do we have any kind of ordinance or requirement that they maintain their shots?
We have a county ordinance, and we have a state statute in regards to rabies vaccination. And you'll see further on where we have issued citations in regards to that.
Okay, so if I understand on the previous slide, there were over four hundred that didn't have, where the rabies weren't current?
Right.
Rabies shots? But we didn't issue all of them citations, did we?
No, that's if we can find out who the owners are. Some of these bite cases, we are, we might not know who those owners are.
Would it benefit the county to have, to make a requirement for all the animals to be chipped?
All the animals that we pick up that are running stray are scanned for microchip, and then if they go to the Animal Services Center, so if they're claimed there, then we've gone through and we will, we will hold those owners accountable.
Okay. But if you, they're not chipped, and we don't know who the owners are, and they're running, and they're free, and they've bitten someone, no rabies shot, then what's the best thing to do to help that? I mean, how do we, how do we prevent problems with that, and how do we address those problems once they occur? What's the best way we can do it?
Well, if an animal bites someone and the animal's running stray, and we don't know who the animal belongs to, the animal control officer will respond. They will patrol the area, they will look for the animal, get a description as much as they can of the animal. They will patrol, like I said, we will get as many officers as we can out there, patrol. Then we will set out traps in that area to see if we can find that and trap that animal. And then hopefully, we can trap it that way.
Okay, now, I assume that you do not recommend the general public take any action to try to help with this?
No.
Effort? Okay, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Chaparro, please.
Thank you. Mary Lou, you are stating here that six cases went to court. How do you determine which cases are filed in the court? Or, from what I understand, there's a citation given, and then the people will appear in court, but six cases in one month, I'm not understanding that.
So those are the six cases that we've got subpoenaed for? Yeah. We issued, we issue so many citations a month, that's a different statistic. Those are the cases that we issued, that we got subpoenaed to go to court for that month. So those went to court because those individuals probably either pled no contents or are not And so going into February, if we look at February's statistics, we had three cases that went to court with six charges, and they were for, three were for rabie restraint violations, one was for rabies control, and then the other two were population control. And population control is because the animal's not fixed, like spayed or neutered, or they don't have an intact permit, one or the other, which they need to have one or the other. The charge was, one of the charges was deferred, a deferred sentence, meaning they went to court and the judge deferred it. So if they didn't get in trouble with the law, then that charge would drop off at a certain amount of time. A charge was reset for another day, and three charges were set for a no-bond bench warrant. And then the amount of time for that was fourteen months. So it took fourteen months from the time we initially charged that person, the longest one, to fourteen months before we went to court. And our time on that was about eight hours for our court cases and our appearances.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Allen's?
Is that eight hours actually spent in court, or does that include travel time?
No, that's just total time for the officers preparing for the case, getting the cases together, interviewing witnesses, and actually court appearances.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Absolutely.
How many citations are written in totality by all our animal control officers per month on average? Do you know that?
Well, if I look, like last, like I was looking at the statistics, we looked at seventy-four for that one year, and I just pulled up, we just pulled up March yesterday, actually, and the citations for March, we issued five last month, citations. Out of those five, we also have our warnings, our written warnings and others that we either write and follow up with the citations as well to get compliance for.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, those that go to court, it's because there's no other option that has worked for them. They basically disregard it, they don't control the animal, there's repeated incidents where the animal is reported unrestrained and off the property. These are basically, that's really why, I guess, the numbers aren't dramatically large because most people will try to cooperate from the very beginning, even after having received some kind of citation. Those that really go to court, it's because you cannot get compliance from them. So I want to make sure that that's, because it may be misleading just to kind of look at the numbers. There's quite a bit of activity in trying to educate the public, educate the individual animal owner, try to work with the animal owner, and it's at that point where they basically have disregarded, and there's continued inability to handle the dog, which is causing problems then in the neighborhood, which then leads to basically pursuing the court option against them.
Thank you for the response, Mr. Masias, and I've been in contact with Mr. Masias on several issues in my district, and it seems as though they've all been resolved once your office has been contacted, so thank you.
I appreciate that. And just to go a little further, if we look like at a typical call, say we responded to an animal running at large, and the officer responds, and they find out who the dog owner is, or they follow the dog home, and the number one goal, if that dog is not vicious and or dangerous or providing any really bad incident, maybe attacking another animal or anything like that, is to get that animal safely back to their owner instead of into the shelter. Educating that owner in regards to our animal ordinances and our state statute. And so if we can get voluntary compliance, that's our number one goal. So we'll look at, we have a shared drive in our system where the officers can look in our shared drive and see on our case folder if we've been out there before, how many times we might have been out there, and if we have any issues in regards to that. They'll also scan that animal to see if there's a microchip, if there's a microchip, to see what's, you know, what's happened there. And so we have our court outcome too, which our logs will show us that individual's name to see if they've been to court before for that animal as well. And so they can look at that in the past and see. So they're not just going out there and educating that person over and over and over and over again. We actually have a system going, and it'll help that person come into compliance instead of just getting slapped with a bunch of citations right off the bat, you know? So we're trying to work out some type of a system that way. That's where you'll see like the four hundred and seven written warnings with compliance that'll come in more. So this is, this is just really quick, and I won't, I won't bog you down with these, but this was more of a, excuse me, sir?
Oh, no, I was gonna say, Commissioner Reynolds?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Reynolds?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mary Lou. You know, this is, this is really complicated, and I have an experience on my own, where we had a person, well, in my neighborhood, who had a dog that kept getting out, and they would chase everybody walking, chase the cars, bark and all that, and they were scared a lot of people in the neighborhood. And you think, well, is this dog vicious or not? I mean, that's, my point is, it's hard, it's difficult to understand. And it went on for like a year, year and a half, and I'd call the guy who owned the dog, he'd come get the dog, put him back in, but the dog always got out, it seemed. Finally, they bit somebody. So it's really difficult because you can go for a lot of times with the animal seeming very dangerous, very vicious and not, and in an effort to try to scare people, it accidentally bit somebody, didn't break the skin, wasn't a problem, but it's just hard to determine that. I guess your job is complicated is what I'm trying to say. And it's difficult for us to think, how do you figure out whether it's time to charge somebody or not until somebody's actually hurt, you know, or some other dog is hurt? I think that's kind of what I'm getting at. How do we, is there any way we can anticipate something happening without waiting for something to happen?
Well, we have Well, we have, we have our state statute, which is our guiding, our guide that we use, which outlines our, our definitions that we go by. And that's what we have to use as our, as the facts that come in. Those will be the facts that will guide us as to what, how we're going to proceed with the case. You know, if, if we don't have all the necessary elements that are required by that state statute, then we cannot proceed. If we have all those elements in place, then we will take the next step. Just because a dog does certain things and we can deem that dog dangerous by state statute doesn't mean the dog has to be put down. That individual has a right to their property and get their dog back as long as they comply with the state statute.
Correct.
So there's a process to that. We have three dogs in our courthouse facility right now that have been deemed dangerous by their own individ, their own owner. And they're complying in getting their own property ready right now to get their own dogs back. We went out yesterday and did one inspection. We're going to go back out and do a second inspection so that they can obtain their dogs back. Their dogs get out again and do something again, then they will be charged with a felony as per state statute. Then it falls into the Sheriff's Department's hands in regards to that. But then we've done our part on our level. So that's how we would proceed with that.
Thank you so much, because I, I think that it's something that some of my constituents have called me and said, how do we get from zero to, you know, to a situation where the dog has to be put down? And I think your explanation was very, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So just real quick, these are the animals that are picked up, these are explanations of our districts, these are the geo-districts. So it kind of gives you an idea of what our geo-districts are. I know the commission districts are a little bit different. So it goes 2020, 2021, and so far what we've had on 2022 does not include our March numbers. I won't go through those, but you can kind of see those numbers. This is District Two. And you can kind of see where the, the high numbers are and the low numbers. And in the end, we'll have a chart that'll give you a comparison, it'll let you see it a little bit easier. District Three. District Four. Five. Six. And then seven, because there's seven of the geo-districts. And so here's the chart of the comparison. So if you look at that chart, you can see that 2022 is in gray because it's just started, 2021's in, the one in red, and 2020's in blue. So you can see 20, the different numbers there on, on the amount of animals that have been picked up in regards to the different districts and the geo-districts for that. And that's total animals, that's dogs and cats combined. And these are our years totals, so the number of animals picked up is on the 2,000, like 146, and then your field return to owners. That's the officers in the field, what they've tried to return to the owner where they safely can do so. So if an animal's running stray, they scan it and they can get it safely back to the owner instead of into the shelter. Those are those numbers. And for that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Allen's?
Mary Lou, do you get the daily reports that the Animal Service Center issues concerning animals picked up, animals returned, animals given to rescue organizations?
I get the daily reports in regards to animals that are impounded from the animal control officers, yeah. Yeah, I just get a limited portion, sir. The ones that Curtis Herring sends out.
Because there's other information in those daily reports, what came in overnight, what was let loose or adopted or sent out to a rescue organization during the day?
If, if it's the one Curtis Herring sends out, that's the one I receive. And that's in regards to what?
I am distressed by the number of issues involving animal control officers not leaving any information to the Animal Service Center concerning the particulars of the animal. Sometimes there are no memos, no, no identifying information. Do you take that up with the animal control officers? Because they seem to be detrimental in that regard.
If there's any kind of information that's sent out to me like that, I've take, I've, I speak to that officer right away, sir.
Quite frankly, the city is the worst culprit than the county in that respect, but the animal, the director of the Animal Control Center has no authority over the animal control officers and can insist that they follow protocol, but it seems to me there is a lack of following protocol in too many cases.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps the question should be as to whether we're following our standard operating procedures and what they are, and what do we expect the information related to each animal? I'm assuming that we're giving the address that the animal or the proximity of where the animal was taken into custody. I'm assuming they give a description of what the, the animal is that's being delivered. Ms. Ward might want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, and, and usually on those incidents that I believe you're referring to is an incident where they might have vague information on like an owner release or, or whatnot on an animal and the officer doesn't have complete information like a phone number or whatnot, where the officer, or the Animal Services Center can call that individual to get more information and it's not provided because for whatever reason those people don't have that information or something like that. That, that's what I believe you're referring to.
Well, usually the, the comment by the issuer of the daily reports is the officer left no comment, period. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But it seems to me that they could at least comment that they don't have enough information to be informative for the people at the Animal Control Service Center.
Well, I think if you're picking up a stray animal and you, there's certain, there's certain categories in the system that they're using Shelter Love that has those identifiers that is required from an animal control officer, that they input that information. And once you've got all that information in, when you get to a certain point on the comments section, it's not needed on every, every animal that you've impounded. So some, in, some it's needed, like if an animal is limping or if you notice something particular that you want to add there for that animal that you're impounding, you would add that to that comments section. If it's just a stray impound that doesn't require additional information, you might not add that comment on there. That's what, something you might see if there's no comments added on there, on that.
It would seem to me that a minimum, if the animal was a stray, the animal control officer could say, picked up stray animal, just so they know some circumstance involving the
Well, the shelter, the shelter has their policy in regards to that. Now, I could check with the shelter and see if they would like us to add that in regards to their impounding procedure. They don't have us put that down on that procedure.
Because on its face, it appears to be negligent.
Okay. I will follow up with the shelter.
And that report is sent out to at least a dozen people twice a day.
Okay.
Chairman.
Hello, all. I'm Brian Holsey, I'm the caseworker for Donaana County Animal Control. I was a former animal control officer before I received that position. In regards to Shelter Love, if an animal is picked up as a stray, that's the first thing that we, that they have it under Shelter Love, is picked up as stray or in custody or anything like that. Usually if, for the comments on Shelter Love, is if we have no information on the dog other than what we can see, and that's already in the information before it even gets to the comments. So if we pick up a dog and we have no, there's no microchipped, we don't know who the owner is or anything like that, all the information that we do have is usually in there before we get to the comments section.
I'm not addressing you in this regard as a county commissioner, I'm addressing you as a member of the Animal Service Center Board. And it just, given the widespread circulation of these reports, it would seem to me that there should be some iota of information left when the animal is turned into the service center.
Yes, so all the information that we have is already put into that system from the color of the dog, the sex of the dog, the, the age of the dog, any information that we have is put into that system.
Well, it's not apparent on its face.
Commissioner, I, I know we're already following procedure in regards to that aspect and what the shelter's requesting from us in regards to the, the shelter policy on the impounding part of that. If they want to change that procedure, you know, that's something we can check with the shelter, with Clint himself, to see if that's something they need to add to that. But I know that's something that we're already following.
Okay, well, I've aired my concern.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Murillo.
What district is, does four cover?
Go back to your district.
District four?
Go back to your slide, please.
I just wanted to see that.
I go back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mary Lou. I want to say I was probably the one that asked for some of the statistics about the, how many citations were done, because the last time I remember having this presentation, maybe three, four years ago?
Yes, sir.
That there were zero citations or one or two citations in the year. I, I want to applaud you for what you've presented today and the fact that you guys are doing what I consider to be a, making a much better effort in order to try to, to control some of these situations. And the citations bear that out, the number of calls you're, you're having bears that out, number of court cases, this is all stuff that I didn't see the last time you did a presentation. So I'm applauding you for the effort you've done and your, and what your organization's done. Let the board know if there's anything we can do in a way of an ordinance or something to help to make your job easier, okay, and more effective.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ward, I, I did have just a couple of, well, one observation and then a couple of questions. I'll make the observation, I think, and this is something we've seen, I, I know as we mentioned at the beginning of this, is for those of us on the Animal Service Centers Board, when you, when you showed the number of animals picked up versus those that are microchipped, I think it's, it's consistently over the last three years has been one-sixth of the number of animals picked up are microchipped. And I know that's a huge issue for, and, and for you all especially, and the Animal Service Center, but it, it's a, it's a matter of, I think, pet ownership and where we need to make sure, and I, I don't know how we get there, but we need to have a way in which we improve those numbers to make, you know, we have some traceability to these animals. And I don't know, this is leading up to my question. You know, I know there's been some discussion on revising our animal control ordinance, and I didn't know if that's being taken into account. And two, what is the timeline for getting that revised? Because I know the city of Las Cruces has done their animal ordinance and revised that. Now we're doing our, our side of things. Just wanted to know, you know, kind of what, what's being worked on, where and what kind of timeline we're looking at for that ordinance update.
So we're working on that right now. Actually, we're working with legal on that in regards to revising our ordinance. Me and, and our caseworker are working on our in-office edits. There's obviously a lot of information that we need to add to it. We don't have in our current ordinance animals killing livestock. We don't have cockbiting in our current, current ordinance that needs to be added in that. So if there's anything currently that happens like that, we have to refer to the Sheriff's Department to issue or, or enforce because it's in our state statute. So we don't have that and we're going to incorporate that into our, our next ordinance. We're also looking at other incident, other things that could assist us in our ordinance. So we're working, we're working on that and timeline we're looking at, we're hoping to get it within the next month to our legal department so that they could look at that and say, okay, yes, you can do this, you know, you can't do this. And then hopefully after that, get it out. And I know Commissioner Allen's was interested in, in, in supporting that to, to the board and, and then putting it out.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question was around staffing levels for your department. Where are we at in terms of staffing?
Right now, we are at five officers, we're losing one this week, and so we are short.
Okay. I mean, I think that's, and the reason I, and I know that's one of the, we've communicated out, I know that came up during my constituent meeting in Garfield, is that, you know, and we're trying to communicate that we're stretched, we're trying to hire, and so, but I know that's always, you know, I, I think between codes enforcement and animals are probably in the top three items that we usually hear some feedback on. So I know we're trying to communicate that and whatever we can do to try to get those positions filled, I know that's easier said than done, but, you know, I know we appreciate it and, you know, once we can get, get more officers out on the, into the county, it'll make, it'll make a big difference. So, thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen's?
I don't know if the city is short of animal control officers, but I am curious as to how our salaries compare to the, to the cities.
Mr. Chairman, certainly the compensation levels are lower for the county. And we are working on a proposal, but it involves discussions with a union as well. So we haven't, we've already explored the openness of the union to focus in on this particular area. We believe that we have an indication that they're prepared to do that. So we're working on a financial package that we hope will lead to filling that, that gap and filling us, getting us officers to the full complement level.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Allen's. Any last questions or comments for Ms. Ward? All right. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're on the consent agenda items six through 13. We'll look to approve that by one motion. Before we get the motion, I want to know if there are any items on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to pull for separate consideration? Okay, I'm hearing none, so can I get a motion?
It's moved.
To approve item six through 13, that's moved by Commissioner Allen's, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Is there any input, questions, public input on item six through 13? Okay, seeing none? Brandy, will you call the roll on item six through 13?
Commissioner Allen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapado?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
The consent agenda does have two resolutions. Item number eight, resolution number 2022 dash 22. Item number 10, resolution number 2022 dash 23.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, item, agenda item number 14, presentation, budget revision, and a resolution for the 2022 summer enrichment internship program in the amount of $2 million.
in the amount of two million, seven hundred twenty-two dollars, seven hun, oh, sorry, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. And a motion and a second for approval.
Send them a second.
Moved by Commissioner Ellen, seconded by Commissioner Chapado, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm back.
I, I was gonna say, I was like, saw you sitting in the back and I didn't know if you were here joining us just because you missed our, you missed our, our company or?
Definitely missed the county. So, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, my name is Lonnie Davis and I'm the program supervisor for the 2022 summer enrichment internship program. So this presentation, I will share the accomplishments that the county achieved last year and provide you with the enhancements that are, that we are doing this year to achieve the bigger goals that we have. This program is in, a, a joint effort with the New Mexico Department of Public Education and funds are from, um, the federal government as part of the pandemic relief efforts. This program pays for the, um, cost of the student interns' wages, uh, during the summer program. So the goal of the program is to provide high school students with the opportunity to participate in high quality internships in government agencies, including city, county, local agencies, nonprofits and private business entities. So these are the 2021 achievements that the county made. Last year, Doña Ana County had the highest number of interns placed within the state. Twenty-six counties and tribes participated. And as noted there, we had a total of one thousand two hundred seventy-five participants in the state of New Mexico. The county hosted forty-three percent of that number for a total of five hundred forty-seven interns and we coordinated with a hundred eighty-three business partners. Interns were paid ten fifty an hour and they may work twenty hours a week up to a maximum of a hundred twenty hours for the summer. Because we did so well last year.
Sorry, Ms. Davis, can you give a second, hold on, uh, Commissioner?
Go back to the previous slide.
Oh, sure.
You hired thirty-five coordinators and one staff. Is that thirty-six staff?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ellens, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I just interject because there's a little bit of a gap? Last year, we were given one point three million dollars to carry out this objective. But the way the program was structured is that it had a different director because we were given a very, very short window of opportunity to put this program together last summer. So part of the program envisions that you hire coordinators, basically temporary employees, and most of them were from the education ranks. They in turn were responsible for supervising twenty students, mentoring them, making sure that their placements were being, that working out properly, interfacing with the individuals that were utilizing the, uh, employees. So that's what coordinators are. They're basically, uh, and, and as, uh, Lonnie gets into the, the slide for this year, you'll see that everything is notably increasing because of the confidence that the public education department has related to the county's, uh, program. So those coordinators are brought on to supervise and those thirty-five coordinators and staff basically were the overview and, um, sup, partially supervising the five hundred and forty-seven students that were placed among different government and private business entities to serve as interns.
So the thirty-five coordinators were temporary employees and the staff is a permanent employee?
Uh, no. This, the, the, they're, they're all temporary in nature and they last for the duration of the program. So normally just during the summer. So these coordinators, the thirty-five coordinators only worked from, for basically an eight-week period supervising the students.
And what's the difference between them and the one staff member?
Well, I'm not sure why it's situated like that. We certainly had a program director who was only a temporary employee. We may have used, uh, one, one staff person who did the financial paperwork, uh, related, uh, to the program.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
So moving on to this year, um, since the county did so well this year, our goal is to sponsor eight hundred student interns this year. Our budget increased from one point three million to two point seven million. And the student interns' wages increased from ten dollars and fifty cents an hour to thirteen dollars an hour. Interns may work up to two hundred hours this summer as compared to the one hundred twenty hours, um, last summer. Because of the goal of sponsoring eight hundred and the fact that we must have one coordinator for every twenty interns, our plan is to hire forty coordinators and have three staff members and that would be including me and a couple of, um, of, uh, coordinators that would then be responsible for managing the coordinators.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ellens?
Mr. Masiass, is this, uh, being financed by the federal money?
Uh, yes, sir, there is no really county funds that are involved. Obviously, there is staff support and there is an associated cost in supporting this effort. But the two point seven million dollars are all federal funds that are being run through the Department of, uh, the Public Ed Department as a flow-through. We're soon to get half of that, fifty percent of the two point seven million will be, uh, turned over to the county. I think just as soon as this, as soon as, uh, this grant agreement is approved by the county and we sign it, they'll be sending us, uh, basically half of the two point seven million so that we'll have it in our funds. So maybe our treasurer can actually find a way to deposit and, uh, invest the money real quick and get a few dollars out of it. But, uh, other than that, it's all federal money and, uh, uh, that goes to support this effort. Part of the effort, just so that you kind of understand the dynamics, so that we, uh, maybe jump to the three staff. Ms. Davis is one staff, she'll hire two basically assistants that will help her, I expand the number of businesses and governmental entities that will take, um, take these students. That's part of their role. And their role is to, uh, get the students applying and we've already met with the school districts. They're very excited about this opportunity because they have programs during the school year that are somewhat similar where they try to place students to get, uh, on-hand experience. So they're very excited that we'll build up this program and basically hand it off to them beginning in the fall semester. But the goal here is that by the twenty-sixth of May, when school lets out, we will have already eight hundred students knowing where they are going to be placed with what businesses or what governmental entity and so that they will then engage in a six-week program. We're working with Las Cruces Public Schools because now they have a truncated or a shorter period of time for their summer recess since they've gone to a, a year-long school program. So their summer break isn't as long, so we're working with them, we're working with Gadsden and Hatch, we're working with all of the charter schools. And it's our goal that by the twenty-sixth of May to have eight hundred students as soon as they leave school, knowing where they're going to go work this summer. And they will, and again, the great thing for them is that we were able to convince the organizers of this program to increase the, the hourly wage from ten fifty to thirteen dollars an hour. We're going to publicize, uh, I think it's going to bring great attention to the county in terms of the, the opportunities. It did so last year, a lot of the parents were very excited coming to all of the orientation. But anyway, those three staff, their main goal is to find placements, uh, align placements as much as possible to the interests of the students and to make sure that they are ready to proceed. We're actually going to be hiring eight hundred county employees because they then come under the county umbrella and we can, uh, as we did last year so that the, the place, the potential placements aren't concerned about liability issues, insurance issues. The only concern they have is that they have basically free support during the summer and their responsibility is to supervise those employees and, uh, those students and to give them as meaningful an experience as possible.
Lonnie, what's, what's the minimum age and how did you hit upon eight hundred as the number?
Last year, the minimum age was sixteen, um, years old. This year, we're lowering it to fifteen-year-old interns. However, they will need to submit a work permit to the county prior to applying for, um, for the internship program. And to get a work permit, they will either go to the Department of Workforce Solutions or go to their designated school administrator to get the work permit.
Uh, again, Commissioner, just so that you're aware, the primary focus is juniors and seniors. And then those that will, that will just graduate in May, technically they're not a high school student any longer, but they can participate in this program. If some of the students that participated last year are in their freshman year of college and are interested in coming back to work in this program, they also can, um, participate. So the main focus though is the, the greatest number is those sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. And as Ms. Davis indicated, the change that we were able to advocate for is that we could go down and accept some fifteen-year-olds if they carry that labor, uh, certificate.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Ellens. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lonnie, I'm, I'm excited about this. I'm looking at the numbers though and, and my brain's not computing everything. Last year, the state employed twelve thou, twelve hundred and seventy-five students. We in the county did five hundred and forty-seven. How many did the county actually employ? I mean, is it five hundred and forty-seven that worked for the county or worked with businesses in the county?
Oh, okay. So let me, because, forgive me for in, interjecting, it's that Ms. Davis wasn't part of the program la, last year. So I know the historical basis a little bit better. Out of the entire state and this program, basically we placed five hundred and forty-six students, forty-six percent of the total. Even Bernalillo County, that's three times our size, placed two hundred students. But you can see the ripple effect because they've used us to showcase what can get done if the county government wants to make that commitment. So you can already see Bernalillo County is trying to really publicize, uh, their program as well. So, um, we, here at the county, we utilized fifty-six out of the four hundred, the five hundred and forty-six students. The city of Las Cruces placed eighty, between eighty and eighty-five. Memorial Medical, NMSU, the school districts themselves will place some of these students. So we're trying to make sure that we're as fair as we can throughout the county by basically inviting people to let us know they can use interns. The goal is eight hundred. Actually, I, I, I'm not saying that I just picked that number out of the air. We, we were, we could have placed six hundred students last year because they supplemented our funding because they saw what direction we're going in. So we picked eight hundred to serve as the goal because we believe that with this more advanced opportunity to organize the program, we can hit that number. And I believe that if we hit that number, then, uh, the PD, as they did last year, might be willing to give us additional funds if there's additional students that we can identify. So in your districts, if you know of businesses, uh, that might be interested in using this supplemental employment and you know that the private businesses have been struggling to find people to fill slots, so they, I know that they're going to be jumping at this opportunity, but the, the goal is to try to give them as enriching an opportunity as potentially possible. So it isn't just, you know, bussing a table, it's working at Memorial Medical, it's working at the university, it's working in ways that, uh, expands opportunities. They really showcased some of the students that worked in our PIO office last year, especially with Joseph. They did some really great work in terms of video productions that, and I believe those two students went on to their freshman year at the, um, New Mexico Tech in Socorro. Very, so a lot of them get great opportunities to have a more sophisticated experience. We're trying to focus on that, but at the same time, uh, we're just, we're trying to get students to be able to work this summer. So if some of them end up, uh, as kitchen support, as cleaning, uh, buildings, uh, I mean, that's, that's a, a summer internship. I know that during the summers in high school, I melt cows, so, you know. I'm sure some of these, uh, other experiences, although they may not be working in a hospital, can still be an enriching experience. Yeah, and but anyway, it's brought great attention to the county, great attention statewide.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Masiass and thank you, Lonnie. I, I agree, I think this program is fantastic. I think we did an excellent job last year. I'm excited that we're giving a bigger opportunity this year. And, uh, so I think it's gonna be great. I was just trying to make sure that we weren't hiring eight hundred students here at the county because I didn't remember that from the last year's program.
No, no, no.
So it's actually placing eight hundred students in the county with, uh, with companies. And, you know, this is also a tribute to the community that they stepped up and actually accepted the responsibility and the opportunity to, to, uh, employ these students. And, uh, so I, I think this is fantastic. Just, uh, compared to your milking, I, uh, actually hung tobacco in, in high school. Housing tobacco is what it's called in Kentucky, so.
When you deal with an animal that generally is indifferent to you, slaps you across the face, uh, with a tail that's covered with a substance that shouldn't be confused with guacamole and kicks you and urinates on you at will, it really prepares you for a life in politics and in law. So I thought it was a great basis for, um, the career that I chose.
Quite a, quite a foundation to build on, I'd say. Good job.
Man, I think we're, we're providing some interesting, uh, entertainment here to those that are tuned into our webcast. Commissioner Ellens?
Fernando, does the city have a similar program? Not that I've heard.
No, no, but they're a, a very strong partner and participant, uh, participant in this program. Last year, they did place about eighty students throughout their, throughout their network.
Eighty?
Eighty. And this year, right now, they're, they've made certainly a commitment and have identified eighty-five potential placements, although we're encouraging them to identify a, a larger number if possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next slide is our enhancements. Last year, at the end of the program, we listened to our business partners and student interns who participated. And based on their feedback, we have made several improvements this year with the hope to streamline that program administration to be more effective. So these are the enhancements. Applications for student interns and coordinators will be online and it will be posted and, um, on our county website. We also intend to call coordinators of last year to see if they wish to participate again this year. Time cards will now be electronic. Last year, we had paper time cards and so the whole- Last year, we had paper time cards, and so the hope is to have an electronic time card where the student interns may now use their cell phones to log in, clock in and clock out. This year, we also hired a third-party payroll administrator. It is Payday that's based out of Albuquerque. They will manage the time cards for the student interns and be responsible for payrolling them. Coordinators will still be paid by the county. As I mentioned to you earlier, we're allowing fifteen-year-old student interns to join the program, again, provided they, they give us a work permit. Another enhancement that we've done this year, and this is based on the feedback from business partners, one of their concerns last year is they had to deal with so many coordinators, so many different coordinators. If there were five interns, they had five coordinators they had to interface with. So the goal this year is to minimize interfacing with several coordinators and probably just have one or two coordinators for a particular business partner. Lastly, since we are starting this program earlier, this will allow us to enhance our ability to market the program to business entities and potential interns in an effort to reach our eight hundred goal this year. So we will post on social, social media sites, print and radio ads, website postings and other means to let the public know of the program. So for timeline, we will be posting the applications for coordinators online on April eighteen. On May two, we will open or post that application form for interns on our website, so they can now apply. Summer internship will start on May twenty-six, and we will have orientation meetings with students and coordinators on May twenty-six and twenty-seven. The last day of internships will depend. Obviously, Las Cruces Public School decided to shorten summer this year, and so internship will potentially end around July fifteen, as school starts July twenty-first for Las Cruces. Gadsden and Hatch will be much later than the Las Cruces Public Schools.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allenz.
You're going to have orientation meetings with students and coordinators in two days? That's over, that's like a thousand people, so to speak. Where are you going to do all this?
Mr. Chairman, it'll be in stages. Last year, we went down to the Gadsden School District and did orientation there. We went up to Hatch, did orientation there for those students so that they wouldn't have to travel around. We gave some backup dates to do orientation, but again, as they become county employees, we put them through basically an abbreviated orientation as an employee, the expectations, the standards. And I'm sure that will be, if we've hired coordinators prior to that, we'll do their orientation separately. But I don't know if you remember, these chambers were filled with students and parents for orientation. They were brought in, some of the parents chose to participate as well. But the, this room, all of the other suites, the school districts, the city, everybody has opened up their doors for us to be able to do the orientations related to the, perhaps the particular students that may be placed there, so that we have a variety of options and we'll be coordinating all of that in anticipation of the commencement. I also do want to stress that each student can work up to two hundred hours. Normally, it's twenty hours a week, but we already have permission from PED that if we need, because of compressed schedules, if we need to allow some students to work up to, say, thirty hours a week in order to make sure they get their two hundred, then we'll have that authority to proceed in that manner. Also, one of the, just kind of ideas for marketing is to basically say, come make twenty-six hundred dollars, because that's the maximum that the student will make during the course of the summer, but it's not a bad situation for basically part-time work. A student can make thirteen dollars an hour, twenty hours a week, two hundred max. They can make two thousand six hundred dollars this summer.
Well, the reason I asked, it looks like a massive two-day undertaking.
Well, and the reality is that there'll probably be some additional orientations because students, you know, you advertise the program, you, you do it through all of the schools, you use their method of communicating with students and parents to let them know about the program, but still, you get kind of stragglers coming in, trying to become part of the program, and our orientation has been to try to get as many students engaged as we possibly can. So yes, there is a lot of work to do between now and the time that school lets out, but it's a longer period of time than what we had last year.
So with that, I stand for questions.
More?
Are there any additional questions for Ms. Davis? All right. Any public input? Randy, will you call the roll on agenda item fourteen?
Commissioner Allenz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
That does have a resolution number. That number is two zero two-two dash two-four.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, agenda item number fifteen, a presentation and acceptance of sub-award from the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for Emergency Rental Assistance in the Amount of Four Million and an Associated Budget Division and Resolution. May I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Murillo? Okay. Ms. Dawood?
Good morning, Commissioners. I will do a presentation today on Emergency Rental Assistance Program at the Doñana County. So the Congress passed a bill in December twenty-twenty for twenty-five billion to help residents with emergency rental assistance. Three months later, a second bill for twenty-one point five billion dollars was passed. These were both part of the CARES Act, and Doñana County was the recipient of both those awards, Emergency Rental One and Emergency Rental Assistance Two programs. This slide summarizes the assistance that we had received. We received nine point three six five million in Emergency Rental Assistance One program. We received this money in January twenty-twenty-one. The end date for the award was September thirtieth, but we have been very efficiently working on this program, and we were able to assist residents with this amount by the end of March. We started discussions with Department of Finance and Administration at the State of New Mexico. The state received hundred and sixty million for Emergency Rental One, and they are giving a sub-award of four million from that funding to us so that we can continue with the same speed that we are working with and are able to help more residents. So this additional four million would be a sub-award from DFA, State of New Mexico, and the end date is fifteenth August, which is forty-five days prior to the U.S. Treasury end date of September thirtieth. That way, the state would have time to include our reports in their final report and close out their grant. On Emergency Rental Assistance Two program, the additional twenty-one point five billion that Congress had allocated, we received an award of seven point one-one million. This funding would end in September twenty-twenty-five, so we still have an additional three years to continue with this assistance with our next pool of money. On the first Emergency Rental Assistance One, we received nine point three six five million from U.S. Treasury. The funding came in on January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. We put in a program and started dispersing as of February tenth, within two weeks. We were the first in the state and among the first in the country to start with this program. Out of the nine point three six five funding, ten percent is for admin cost and ninety percent for direct assistance for rental and utility for those who are struggling to pay the bills. As this graph shows, we were able to start the program. We established a team, and every month, our program kept getting stronger. We were able to assist more people and give out the funding. Our numbers kept multiplying, and as of March thirty-first, we were able to disperse all the money that we had received on Emergency Rental Assistance One. As our ERA One program is already in place, we, it's very easy for us to transition and accept the sub-award for four million and continue with this program. With this additional four million, we should be able to assist another five hundred and thirty households in the county based on our average assistance, which is sixty-eight hundred dollars. That's eight months of rent and four months of utility assistance. The state had received hundred and sixty million, and out of that, they are giving us a sub-award of four million. The end date for this is August fifteen, so in the next, from April to August, in the next five months, we will be spending this four million to assist more people. The ERA Two program that we have, we were awarded seven point one-one million by U.S. Treasury. They sent us forty percent of the money upfront, which is two point eight four million. This program ends in September twenty-twenty-five, so we have three and a half years more to continue with this program. We will, once we are wrapping up our sub-award of four million in August, we will completely move to ERA Two and keep assisting people. Once we spend seventy-five percent of what the U.S. Treasury gave us of the two point eight million, we can request for the balance, another four point two-seven million, which will take us to the seven point one-one million. So we plan to continue with our Emergency Rental Assistance till twenty-twenty-five until we have used all the funding received. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dawood. Are there any questions for Ms. Dawood and the Emergency Rental Assistance Program? Okay. Commissioner Chaparro?
Not really a question, but a comment. I know that the program was a little, because it was new, it, it started a little slow, but I know that, I'm very much aware that we've helped so many people, that the county has helped so many people. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Macias. I thought it was a tremendous effort, and it's working very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaparro. Okay. Is there any public input? In that case, Randy, will you call the roll on agenda item number fifteen?
Commissioner Allenz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
That item does have a resolution number, two zero two-two dash two-five.
Thank you. All right, Randy, is there any correspondence?
There are two. Alessandra Martinez versus Doñana County and Tamara King versus Doñana County.
Thank you. All right, if I can get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I, I move that the board convene in a closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege to discuss pending or threatened litigation related to, number one, the city of Las Cruces and County of Doñana versus United States of America, cause number two seventeen dash CV dash zero zero eight zero nine. And secondly, city of Las Cruces and County of Doñana versus the Travelers Indemnity Company, cause number two fourteen dash CV dash zero zero nine three one, as authorized by the Open Meetings Act. Section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven.
Okay, we've got a motion, and I need a second.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Allenz. Randy, will you call the roll on going into closed session?
Commissioner Allenz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. Okay, we will go into closed session. It's at